All righty. You are live. Have a great night.
Thank you very much, Danielle. Good evening, everyone. This is the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of Wednesday, May 25th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all very much. As I head to the link for the agenda materials, I want to let you know of our announcement, one announcement for tonight's meeting, and that's for the folks at home to let you know that we will be having our usual Memorial Day Parade in person this year, which is really terrific. Monday, May 30th, the upcoming Monday. And lineup is at the high school, starts at nine fifteen. The parade takes off at ten o'clock. And we hope to see as many of you as possible for that. So for tonight's meeting, share the screen for the folks at home. Here's what we have. We have two public hearings. One is an extension of the Cold War Veterans Exemption. It's a tax benefit for those who were engaged during that time period in armed services. We have a public hearing a few minutes later to comply with updates to the remote portions of the open meetings law. And you'll hear a little bit more about that at seven forty. And we'll take up those issues. And then we have some ministerial work with the accepting a private road name, Old Sycamore Lane. We have a resolution to set the public hearing on Charter of Communications. We have a franchise agreement with the cable company. And so we've got a draft that they sent us over to review and to perhaps set a public hearing to discuss and get input on. And then we're going to extend the contract for the mapping consultant doing work for us on our LWRP update. We're taking up our collective bargaining agreement. Do have some additional things that were added to the agenda late yesterday. Let me see if I can get the most up to date. That from the website. We have also a resolution to discuss and perhaps pass supporting the New York State's climate plan, Climate Action Plan, a resolution to urge the New York State Assembly and Senate to pass a series of bills, seven of them. It's called the Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act. And these bills have a lot to do with work that we've been doing locally and throughout the valley to try and get some control and authority over setting speed limits in our municipality. As you know, New York State is a home rule state, except when and if you want to change the speed limits, and then you're at the mercy of DOT. The eighth item on the agenda is reorg. We're going to take up the possibility of appointing somebody to the Zerling Board of Appeals. And then we've got our collective bargaining agreement with the union. Then we've got board and department reports and committee reports. For the evening. Okay. With that being said, it is now seven thirty-five. And as soon as this loads, we can go ahead. Deanna, would you be kind enough to read the public hearing for the extension of the Cold War Veterans Exemption, please?
Notice, public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May 25th, 2022, at seven thirty-five PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law number A, proposed of 2022, entitled "A Local Law to Amend Chapter 126 Article 4, entitled 'Cold War Veterans' Exemption Regarding Exemption from Real Property Taxes for Cold War Veterans' To exercise the town's right pursuant to Section 458b, 2c, 3 of the Real Property Tax to enact legislation that will will increase the maximum amount of the real property tax exemption for Cold War veterans above the current limit of $12,000 and eliminate the current 10-year term expiration. The Town Board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision concerning routine administration and management under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Please take further notice that copies of said proposed local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. Pursuant to New York laws of 2022, Chapter 56, the meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town's website at www.rethook.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandatv23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@rethook.org and 845-758-4606 by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note, Local Law Number A, Proposed of 2022, in the subject. Two written comments may be dropped in the in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email, name, and telephone number to townclerk@rethook.org by four o'clock PM on the day of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated May 10th, 2022, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thank you very much, Deanna. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on the Cold War Veterans Exemption. Is there anybody who'd like to speak on this issue? Okay, well, for the folks at home, we discussed it at our last meeting. But essentially, what this will do is allow for the exemption to continue. It's sunsetted after 10 years, and it allows for up to a 15% exemption on the assessed valuation of properties that are owned by veterans. And that's the main issue. All right. I think we discussed this quite a bit at our last couple of meetings. Any questions, Town Board members? No? Any comments? Okay. If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Moved.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Christine Kane?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have our second public hearing scheduled for seven forty. We're just just about on time. This one is with regard to updating the Remote Meetings Law. And Deanna, would you be kind enough to read that public hearing notice?
Notice of public hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on May 25th, 2022, at seven forty PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law number B, proposed of 2022, entitled "A Local Law to Amend Chapter 22, entitled Public Notice of" to change the title to "Meetings, Notice, and Procedures" "To amend notice procedures and to authorize video conferencing as permitted by the Open Meetings Law "To exercise the town's right pursuant to the Open Meetings Law as amended by Chapter 56 of the laws of 2022 "to authorize the continued use of video conferencing to conduct public meetings subject to certain conditions. The Town Board has determined that the proposed local law is best described as a local legislative decision "concerning routine administration and management under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. Please take notice that copies of said local law are available for review at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571. Pursuant to New York laws of 2022, Chapter 56, the meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town's website, www.rethook.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandatv23.org. Click on "Watch Live." Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@rethook.org and 845-758-4606 by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note, Local Law Number B, Proposed of 2022, in the subject. Two written comments may be dropped in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York, 12571, by four o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three interested persons may register in advance to participate, participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email, name, and telephone number to townclerk@rethook.org by four o'clock PM on the date of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone, 845-758-4606, so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated May 10th, 2022, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna, so much. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. And for the folks at home, a reminder, what this does is comply with changes that were made to the remote meetings possibilities. And what it says in essence is that the majority of the members of the board must be in a accessible location to the public. This is what typically we refer to as hybrid meeting. Town Board members can participate remotely if the majority of them are able to be in a publicly accessible place where the public can participate live at the meeting.
With the exception of the extraordinary circumstances, quote unquote, exception.
Right. Okay. Very good. Well, if there are no public comments on this, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Come on, Bill.
Second.
Jacob, thank you. All right, all in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
I seconded.
You did second it. You did make it. Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Thank you. I'll get it right one of these days. Very good. Okay. Now we go to the public comment period. Is there anybody who would like to make some public comments before we start with our agenda? Okay. Why don't we then jump into first item on the agenda, which was video conferencing. We're gonna have to go back. Looks like this stack is a little out of order, as was last. Local Law A, Proposed 2022 to extend the Cold War Veterans Exemption, referred to as Local Law A, would now be Local Law Number One of 2022, Resolution Number 28, is what we're talking about. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Hamel. All in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to the second item on the agenda, which is Local Law B, or in this case, it would be two if adopted. With it is a video conferencing policy, which we're not being asked to vote on this evening because we have time for that for the next meeting. We can take a look at that and see if there are any other changes we want to make in addition to the changes that were required to occur with the update. This is now Local Law Number Two. And it would be approved by Resolution Number 29, dated May 25th, 2022. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Agenda item number three. It's to accept a private road name. And if you are watching from home, you're wondering, why does the Town Board need to accept road names? It's really just to make sure that there isn't any confusion and that there aren't roads with similar names or the same name. And let's see. We'll get there. Long stretch. Wow, okay. Sorry, I'm making you dizzy at home watching this. There are a lot of copies of this. Okay. There we go. Resolution Number 30, dated May 25th, 2022, Resolution Accepting the Name Old Sycamore Lane for the Common Drive Located Within Sycamore Acres Subdivision at Yance Road, which I believe is close to but opposite Hudson Valley Sheep and Wool. Beautiful Yance Road. And this is following an approval of the subdivision dated December 18th, 2021. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
You, Christine. All in favor, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel?
Aye.
Easy enough. All right. Next one is a franchise agreement. The municipality has a franchise agreement with the cable company and has had one. I think the most recent one started in 1991 with five-year increments and renewals. And for the folks at home, the funds that you may or may not pay to the cable company in order to have their services, a small portion of that 5%, as a matter of fact, comes back to the municipality to help pay for things like the public access channel and other costs associated with with having the franchise in the community. So there is some small benefit to us by having cable in the community. And so we have an agreement. Don't know if you've had a chance, Town Board members, to take a look at that. If you're comfortable enough for putting it up for discussion, at least at the next Town Board meeting, June 14th. Take a look at that. They are providing some funding, very much needed funding for equipment for Panda. Panda has relocated to the Red Hook Community Center. And they have a very affordable rent there. But they need up-to-date equipment. In fact, Panda is currently not being viewed on Channel 23 because their server is so old and it's malfunctioning. And so we'll be talking about Panda in agreement with the municipalities at our next meeting anyway. And funding and more specific issues. But was were there any questions about this? Are you are you willing to have this document up for a public hearing on the 14th?
You have to scroll down.
Yeah. So sorry. Thank you. There we go. There's the resolution. The document itself, again, for the folks at home, we get 5% of the revenues and a small contribution towards the equipment for the public access channel, which is desperately needed at this point. It's Resolution 31. Is that correct, Deanna?
Yes.
Dated May 25th, 2022. We can set the public hearing for seven thirty-five on June 14th. Does that work for the phone?
Yep, most for me.
Okay, and I so move. Is there a second, Christine?
Second.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Bill Hamel? I'll be working with the partner communities. I was tasked to do the negotiations on behalf of the other municipalities to the back village, trying back town. And we'll be working jointly. Okay. Next up is to extend an agreement. There are maps involved with the LWRP. And the committee working on updating our LWRP is doing a terrific job, led by Paula Schoonmaker. Follow. We thank you immensely for all your great work on this. And there are maps that need to be created. In fact, we just learned that there are additional maps to what we thought. So we need to make some slight modifications to both the rate that's being paid to the individual doing the work and the number of maps. We have 14 maps in total that are going to be created. All of this, by the way, is still within the budget. This is a grant funded by Department of State for the folks at home. Okay, any questions about that, folks? The changes are $90 per hour is the rate. And the number is 14 on the maps. And I think we already have a clean copy of that. This would be Resolution Number 32, authorizing an addendum to agreement for professional services between the Town of Red Hook and Community Planning and Environmental Associates. And I so move.
Second.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Phil got in there. First, all in favor, Christine Kane?
Aye.
Jacob Testa?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're moving right along. One of the things that we don't do as much as other municipalities, and I like to think we do a lot as compared to other municipalities, is have memorializing resolutions. We're often asked to have resolutions in support of very worthy causes and issues. If we were to to do that throughout, we probably have resolution after resolution on the agenda. But there are particular things that we feel very strongly about as representatives for you. And one of them is to make sure that we are transitioning as intelligently and as quickly as possible to renewable energy, taking a look at efficiency and making sure that we are taking not just baby steps, but significant steps. And so we've been asked to take a look at some potential changes to New York State's Climate Action Plan. And the town, by the way, has a Climate Action Plan you're welcome to look at on the town's website and to support some of those changes. And so this resolution goes on to talk about what's happening. I don't think I need to tell you all some of the highlights of the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, which we call the Climate Act for short. Some of the goals is committing the state to reducing greenhouse gas emissions by 40% by 2030 below 1990 levels, achieving net zero by 2050, meeting 70% of electricity needs from renewable energy resources by 2030, and 100% of electricity needs from zero emission resources by 2040. If you were or watched the last meeting, you heard me say that as a local municipality, we have achieved some of this already. Our electricity needs from renewable resources on a good sunny day. The one project that we worked on jointly with the villages produces as much electricity as is utilized in the entire township, including Bard College. So we've made great strides locally, but the state as a whole needs to achieve greater reductions. Ensure just an equitable transition that leaves no one behind. We talk about this often, about the affordability of some of these cleaning energy measures and the fact that financing exists. And oftentimes, those are the folks that need it most because there are savings ongoing. So dedicating 40% of the benefits to disadvantaged communities. And so there is a public comment being solicited around New York State by the New York State Climate Action Council. And we had a reach out by Jen Metzger, asking us if we would participate in considering a resolution and support the scoping plan and some of the specifics in it. And I won't read it all. But you know, it is interesting that the scoping plan speaks about agrovoltaics. And that is something cool location. That is something we had a presentation on a meeting or two ago. And what else? Health-related savings, obviously, if you reduce emissions, transportation, home heating. One of the things that the Energy Committee is looking at is the responsible way to phase out in new developments, whether or not that's possible, fossil fuels for things like heating. And whether or not that would be a good way to start with with the new construction. And so they're looking into, you know, putting together some some information and also taking a look at the availability of things like air source heat pumps in the marketplace. So we are public education and input right now. So they're they're going around New York State, taking input. And so that is what is in front of us. It would be Deanna 3233. Resolution Number 30.
Thirty-three.
Three. Thank you. It's supporting. And some some comments. Bill, did you want to say something?
Yes. In the second resolved, on page two, it says, "The name of the municipality declares its support for prohibiting an expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure." And I think that that is so absolute that we really need to think about emergency backup generation systems for critical infrastructure, like hospitals, government buildings. I'm not saying that the I'm not saying that the technology won't get there in the future to have battery or or solar backup. But it's a fairly standard thing to have, you know, backup generation systems that use natural gas or propane. And they're infrequently used, but I wouldn't want to be in the ICU of a hospital that lost power. Perhaps they had a failure in some other thing and you really, you need to have more than just one backup. And so I think it's important that there be something in here that talks about some exceptions to that.
Well, sure, I think that makes sense to allow for some type of emergency backup. That's one of the many measures we took here at Town Hall for the folks at home who don't know. We've gone through a multi-year process of of really greening and swapping out and making our campus very efficient. We have solar both here and on the highway garage. We've done insulation here in Town Hall and we swapped out our heating and cooling system. So we have air source heat pumps here at Town Hall. But we still do maintain a backup generator. In fact, we've got a grant to replace that generator that does use fossil fuels. It uses a very small amount of fossil fuels. But but it is, it is not absolute, as you said, Bill. So, yeah, again, you know, doing it intelligently and what's what's the old expression, perfection is the enemy of good, right? And I think what's what's in this plan is very, very good and very important. But but to your point, we need to make sure that we're, you know, not not making any missteps along the way as well.
Well, can we make a change?
Yeah, so is this available? Can we change it or do we have to adopt it as they suggested or not?
We could make changes. I mean, what what?
So you need to go to the second second resolved.
It's the bottom of page two. There it is.
Okay. We're at. Now, the only thing I would say to you, the prohibiting an expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure. I don't believe what they're saying there is that you couldn't have a generator for your home that was operated off of natural gas or propane. I think what they're saying with fossil fuel infrastructure is, for example, Cricket Valley over on the east side of the county, that is, you know, a gas generator plant. I think that's what they're talking about.
Well, it is written rather broadly. And since there's no notes or footnotes or discussion paper that goes along with this, to say really what they're what the limits are. I would feel much more comfortable inserting some language in there.
Okay.
So Bill, would you want to say prohibiting expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure, comma, something? Not including generators for emergency services?
Yeah, like with the with the exception of emergency generation systems for critical, you know, for infrastructure.
Okay. With the exception for emergency backup?
Yeah.
Does that work for you? Emergency backup generation? Emergency backup. With the exception of emergency.
Does that work for you, Jacob?
Backup.
I'm thinking about it. I'd be inclined to not make an amendment, I think, but I'm looking at the IPCC report to see if there's anything specific to what the recommendations are there, because I know that that's something that was looked at in the preparation of these sort of recommendations.
Do you want to vote on the suggested change separately first?
Yeah, let's do that. Let's take up. Julia is just joining us now. Julia, thanks. Thanks for joining us and I I hope your daughters event went well. Where where we are on the agenda is we are at number six, the resolution on the New York State. New York State's climate plan. And Bill Hamill has suggested that we possibly make a change to the language on the second result. Town of Red Hook declares its support for prohibiting an expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure. And the edit would be with the exception of emergency backup generation.
For emergency facilities, I think you said right, Bill.
Yeah, I was saying you were like critical infrastructure.
Generation or emergency backup generation and facilities. About that.
Because I think.
Facilities.
I think one of my concerns with that is that it having that carve out kind of like as proposed makes it feel like there's a choice, right? It's not saying you default to electricity-based solution and then you have a backup, right? It seems like the way the way that it's currently being proposed sounds like you have a choice to just use the fossil fuel thing when it's an emergency situation.
No, it's just saying that the way it's written now is basically saying it's unlawful to use a fossil face fossil-based fuel for the generation of any kind of electricity. And what I'm saying is in an emergency, that's what backup generators are for. And most backup generators utilize natural gas, propane. Some use gasoline, the smaller ones, but in a hospital setting, you know, an airport, you know, various places where, you know, there's issues of safety. You need to make sure you have, you know, not just secondary but tertiary forms of backup. And, you know, we in our town use it for Town Hall and at the community center. It's it's a fairly standard form of emergency backup, not for a choice. I mean, we're saying you're going to build it, you're going to use clean energy, but if there is an emergency and you lose your power. And even if you had, say, a secondary form of backup that was a battery and that battery failed, at least you have the ability to pump water, keep electricity on for patients in hospitals and things like that. And I I just, I can't, the way it's written is so broad and restrictive. Since there's no other language that's provided that gives really a definition of what they mean. I I'm not comfortable with it without some additional language.
But it's also written to say expansion, right? It's not saying that you have to eliminate your backup systems that currently exist, right? And airports and everything that exists, they already have those. There's not a requirement to eliminate those.
No, but if you're building, say, a new hospital or nursing home, that's an expansion of of infrastructure. Or you say you're going to build, you know, a new highway building or whatever. I still think that we should have maintained the option because the the amount that it's used is so small. I mean, I have a whole house emergency backup generator for my home. And it goes on maybe three times a year. It's such a minimal, you know, for a few hours or time. There have been a few works, been multiple days, but it really doesn't use a lot of fossil fuel. And I I hear what you're saying, Jacob, about the concern that people might want to, you know, just have a choice. But I I think the way we worded it doesn't really give someone the choice just to use the emergency backup when they want to. It's it's for when they lose their their main source of power.
Can we, Robert, can you read the language that was proposed for the amendment?
Resolve Town of Red Hook supports a sorry, resolve Town of Red Hook declares its support for prohibiting an expansion of fossil fuel infrastructure. And I've given you my interpretation of that, which is not an individual connection, but actually like a power generation facility. But the edit that suggested is with the exception of emergency backup generation and facilities. So emergency facilities, emergency backup.
Or systems.
I think what Bill had said was with the exception of emergency generation.
Systems.
Systems or critical or critical facilities.
Yeah, for critical infrastructure.
Generation systems and critical, well, critical is a word, right? You got to be careful. Critical facilities, what's critical?
Well, certainly any healthcare providing facility, any government facility that provides services to the public.
Critical, well, if you say public, then I guess it's not a private hospital or something, but.
The our community center, say, for example, a place where people congregate when there's no power and they need an air-conditioned facility or they need heat. Those are the those, those are really, that's critical infrastructure.
You know, when when you take the word backup out of it, though, it 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 definitely changes it. I I would support it maybe with the word backup in there.
Well, I I thought that word wasn't.
That was in there. Read read the edit again.
With the exception of backup, emergency, generation, systems and critical facilities.
In critical facilities.
In critical facilities.
For critical facilities, you know.
Or critical facilities, okay.
Do you want to say?
Sure.
Would you feel better if it says for critical facilities needed by the public or something to serve the public? Would that make you feel better?
Well, I guess the question becomes whether or not having a backup emergency generator for the home, I mean, I I'm okay with backup. I'm I'm okay with.
Well, I don't think a home generator is infrastructure.
It's not.
Right, but a a hospital backup system could be infrastructure. Because that might be tied into a natural gas system.
Okay, that's a good cover. It was all right. Let's see if I can read my own chicken scratch with the exception of backup, emergency, generation, systems and systems.
For.
For critical facilities that serve the public. Does that work for you, Bill? Does that work for you?
It'll be fine.
That was a.
It's a little wordy, but.
What's that?
It's a little wordy, but it's.
A little hardy, okay. Well, it is three pages. I don't think I've necessarily changed that.
I appreciate you trying to accommodate my concern.
All right, okay. Christine, does that language work for you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Julia, have you been, are you, were you able to get up to speed on this resolved potential edit?
Yeah, I think so.
You can live with that. Jacob?
Yeah, I think that yeah, I think that I I was missing the the backup language before. I thought that the language that was being proposed was like for critical infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I I I'm still.
You don't have, you know, you don't have.
Yeah, yeah, I'm still thinking it through, I guess. So like, if we want to, and if there are other things that we want to talk about for this or if you want to vote on that amendment, it seems like it has support, so.
Okay, as amended. Resolution thirty-three. Date of May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two, declaring support for the New York State Climate Action Council scoping. And I so move. Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Jacob?
Hi, I'm the 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 resolution's great, otherwise.
As we like to say, all we're trying to do is perfect imperfect here at your local Town Hall, okay? Next up is a topic also near and dear to us all, especially those of us who are in local government and ask to represent the needs and concerns of our citizens. And it deals with road safety. And if you were not with us earlier, I mentioned we are a home rule state, New York State, except when it comes to things like setting speed limits on roads. This, the New York State DOT determines the appropriate, what they believe to be the appropriate speed limit for roadway. We recognize that they have interests in making sure that commerce can take place in a reasonable amount of time. But we have many roads that really serve residential housing subdivisions that would not be impacted and sorry, would not be impacting commerce if we were to lower them and make them safer. And I'm sure if you've studied traffic safety, as I have, you know that outcomes change dramatically when you lower the speeds at which accidents occur. And so we've worked for years to try to lower speed limits on the roadways here in town. And we've had some success. You know, we we were able to get nine G, for example, lowered in a very dangerous stretch there. We were able to lower river road and a few other roadways. But we've also had a lot of rejections from DOT. And in particular, in the residential neighborhoods, the Wynden Acres, the Forest Park, College Park. And so took a different strategy about a year and change ago. Instead of having traffic studies paid for and then submitted to DOT and then just to be rejected again. We look to try to solve the problem, the underlying issue, which is that we don't have control over these roadways, the speed limits. And so I've been working with my fellow supervisors in Duchess County, Ulster County has been doing a lot of work as well and municipalities throughout the Hudson Valley and New York State. Feel very passionately about this. We brought it to the Association of Town. They listed it on a legislative platform that they wanted to make this a top priority, which is putting the decision-making in the hands of the municipalities that know their communities best. There is a series of bills, while slightly different than what we're asking for, but would allow us to get lower speed limits. And right now, for the folks at home, the lowest speed limit that we can have in the township is thirty. If New York State were to approve or request a lower to thirty. And some of these bills grant authority to go even lower, twenty-five, for example. And and that would make a difference. It would allow us to write tickets for those who are going, you know, thirty-five miles an hour. And and many of our roads and subdivisions, it's not appropriate to even be going thirty-five miles an hour. Certainly, if you're trying to raise a family, if you want your kids to be able to hop on a bike and go visit someone in the neighborhood. We need to do everything we can to to make it safe. So I won't go over all the bills. But here, here in the resolution, and let's get to the resolution. Outlines the the basics of each bill. So S O two O two one would allow lower speed limits to be set by municipalities across New York State. Although in those bills, there was the need for some engineering. The Complete Streets Bill will increase state funding where the municipality agrees to fund a complete street design feature. That's great. As you know, we've been working, albeit it has not been at the pace we've wanted to. We have a grant-funded project to do complete streets design. to do complete streets design, including updating our uh highway specifications. When we go ahead and do work on a roadway, um, design would need to take into account the non-motorized use of the, of those roads to see how we might amend them in order to encourage things like bicycling. Uh, what else do we have? Right to safe passage. It will require drivers to pass bicyclists at a safe distance of at least three feet. This is actually the law in many communities in the United States, where you need to, if you are the motorist, create the buffer between you and the bicyclist to, to have a, a you know, a safety margin, if you will, as you're traveling past bicyclists. And then um one of the requirements to getting a license would be that uh New York State drivers need to be educated about safely interacting with vulnerable road users. One of the things, by the way, that I don't think uh folks realize, if you're watching at home, it's illegal to, for example, mow your grass onto the roadway, and part of that is because people do bike often, and the grass gets wet sometimes with the morning dew, and that can create a safety hazard.
Oh, that's also a hazard for motorcycles.
Motorcycle, yeah, as well, yeah. Um, and then there is an extension of um, some of the authority vested on um victims of uh crashes and, and that's the summation of the uh bill, and what we have is a resolution to forward um to our representatives because we really need to resolve this in a way that is holistic, and we need to empower the local municipalities who know what they're doing. So, this is resolution number, Deanna, thirty-five, are we on now? Thirty-four, thirty-four? Urging New York State. Sorry?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, okay. Uh urging New York State Assembly and Senate to pass the seven bills, including the Crash Victims Rights and Safety Act, and I happily move, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any discussion on board members, anything else you wanna add to? I know that one, once we gain control of the speeds on our roadways, we will have very happy constituents. We need to continue to press our representatives on this, and again, it's for low-volume roads, subdivisions, we're not talking about, you know, those uh major arterial roads that uh trucks need to use and so on and so forth, so. Okay, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay, one item on rework, uh we have a resume and a recommendation from the Chair of the ZBA to appoint uh John uh Bonavita Goldman MD, although I don't know if he's MD anymore. Um, John served on the Kingston ZBA. And he moved to Red Hook. And has offered um his experience and expertise, and we have two openings. Any questions about uh John as a member of the ZBA? Is there anything? Look at our schedule here. Vacancies. We all good with uh? Having John join the ZBA? That they, they desperately need to have more members.
Yes, resume, I thought he looked very well qualified, and the uh ZBA Chair um has met with him and recommended that we appoint him to the board. To the ZBA.
So, we have um the openings that we have right now are a vacancy that ends in another five-year appointment, so we have to get them back on schedule here. My list may be a little outdated. It shows that Kate herself has a twenty-twenty-one expiration. I think we updated that to twenty-twenty-six, isn't that correct, Deanna?
Hope you're muted.
Yeah, I, I don't have that one open. I only have what was in the agenda, and it doesn't look correct. I mean, I'll have to look it up.
Okay, so uh we do have a vacancy um created by uh Jim Heckstetter's resignation.
Yes.
And that expires in twenty-twenty-four. And then we have a um spot that expires in twenty-twenty-five, formerly held by Nick Anas. Why don't we consider um John for that spot, that the one that expires in twenty-twenty-five, does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes. And for the benefit of the board, since I'm, I'm the liaison.
Yes, sir.
Because there's only been three members, um, and it takes three to have a quorum, one person can't make it, they can't, and they only meet monthly, and addition to that, even when they have all three members, if one person votes no uh or yes, you know, if there's one opposition to two, it doesn't, it doesn't get adopted either, so. It puts the ZBA in a, in a, a difficult bind, not having a fourth person.
Yeah, very good. Very nice, well, he's got an incredible resume here, um and uh not just uh related to ZBA stuff, or related to um, his medical career. But uh.
Yeah, it was very impressive. So I'd make a motion to appoint him to the term ending in twenty-twenty-five on the Town Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
Who would like to second that?
I would second that.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
And myself, hi. Thank you, John. I know there are actually, Kate is um interviewing yet another person, so we might have a full ZBA board again very soon.
That'd be great.
And we thank all of our volunteers, we couldn't a fraction of the work that we do in this community if it were not for all the volunteers, so if you find yourself with some time and some uh desire, we'll try to match you up with something that you're interested in. Okay, um, that is rework. We have a collective bargaining agreement, long last, we an agreement, a draft, um now approved by the teams, negotiation teams for the union, for the highway unit. Are there any questions, folks, uh, Town Board members? Okay, we do have a resolution. This would now be thirty-five. Deanna, is, is my math tonight?
Yes, thirty-five. Um, wait a second, I don't think that's right. I think it's thirty-six, didn't you just vote on uh rework?
We just voted on, voted on rework, exactly.
Yeah, thirty-six.
Thirty-six, thank you very much. It's an uh resolution, whereas negotiations have been ongoing between the bargaining team for the Town of Red Hook and the bargaining team for UPSU, the Employees Union, for the Highway Unit, and whereas those negotiations have resulted in a tentative agreement contained in the CBA dated, I think it stated the twenty uh twenty-twenty-two, which has been ratified by the membership of the union, and whereas the Board of Trustees of the Town of Red Hook has reviewed the terms and finds that a settlement consistent with the terms contained therein is in the best interest of town, and therefore be resolved that the Town Board of Red Hook hereby approves and ratifies the terms of the aforesaid collective bargaining agreement. Um, any questions, Town Board members? Okay, if not, I would move uh resolution number thirty-six to ratify the agreement. Is there a second? Bill, do you wanna second that since you're on?
Seven second, all the other ones, Tom.
There were a second, or? Um, okay, any questions, any discussion, Town Board members? If not, very good. Thank you very much. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
All right, and thank you all very much. Thanks uh for the folks negotiating on the uh union side as well. We couldn't do a lot of what we do here in town without the excellent employees that we have. That is true. Okay, next up, uh board reports. I need to get back to my list here. Board reports, first up with board reports is too many, uh, Water Department. Mister Howell, would you be kind enough to give the Water District a report, please?
Certainly. Um, unfortunately, the meeting that we, we meet monthly, the board meets, uh, the department meets monthly. It's supposed to meet last week, and it's been put off till tomorrow, but um the, the only real thing to report is um trying to get the contract taken care of so that well number two, which is currently not running, uh to have the, the pump and the motor replaced, um because they're, they've gone defective. But the rate of uh, uh, we have excellent water, um, and plenty of it, and um a water test really well, and um we've lowered the amount that we pumped, because we just didn't need to pump that much. So, but we need to get the other well running, and uh there was an issue, apparently, we, the Town Board, had voted several meetings ago to uh approve the contract, but apparently there was an issue with prevailing labor rates uh in some subsection, and they're trying to get that worked out, so I'm still waiting for a, a status on that, but hopefully I'll get that tomorrow.
Very good. We are, Bill, it looks like you're up again. Control report.
Okay, so uh the one thing I do try to pay attention to are the dangerous dog um incidents. The other things, nuisance dogs or barking dogs, wildlife, but, but there were three in April, um, and I finally got a response the other day to find out what those were, you know, were people bitten. So, there were three incidents, one of them involved a bite, but it was not, it was actually in Mylan, it wasn't in Red Hook.
Okay.
Um, and so the uh SBCA referred that on um to try to get Mylan to take care of it. And as it turned out, that that individual who got bit is gonna be suing the owner of the dog personally. The second uh was something where troopers were called to a dog bite, um. And the issue here was that the call came with, after the ten days uh quarantine period, the, with, the person wasn't badly hurt, but there were two different German Shepherds, and the person who was bit couldn't identify which one bit them. Um, so they got, uh, the owner got a, got a written warning um on that, and then the last one was a call about a dog that was aggressively running into the road and chasing people, barking aggressively, when they showed up, um. They couldn't find the dog, and they, and, you know, there was, they couldn't track down the owner. Um, but that's, that's really it for that, and then obviously next month we'll have maize. Um, but I guess in the, when the weather's warmer, people have their dogs out more often, uh, and there may be a greater likelihood that these things will happen.
Well, I know, Deanna, you, you, you like to remind folks at home. Uh, speaking of dogs, did you wanna go ahead and do one of those reminders?
Uh, yes, to license your dog, it's really not expensive, it's the law. Um, it's twenty-two dollars for um a dog with not neutered and spayed, and it's fifteen if they're spayed or neutered, and um all you need is the rabies and information from your vet, that's it, and fill out an application, and it's really important, because I even stopped a dog. I picked up a dog a month ago on, right here by Hobson's. It wasn't licensed, and I couldn't, I had to call the cops, like, I even came to the town hall and check it out, so. It's really important, because if the SBCA calls on the weekend, and it's not a licensed dog, they'll hold the dog until we give it a license. And that'd be a couple days, so it's really important, it's just the law anyway, people should.
And if somebody does get bit, we need to know if, if that dog has been
Exactly.
vaccinated, and, and, you know, that's only fair to uh the residents that um may have been impacted. Okay. Very good, um, back to the next report, now I got the fun one. All right, uh, the Assessor's Office, um tentative role has been completed on and posted on May first, the Assessor's Office has been very busy with Freedance Day coming up from the twenty-fourth, well, actually, they had it last night. Um, they had, um, you know, a few applications, but not that many. Um, and uh they had two sessions. And what else? There's been a change to the level of assessment, so for the folks at home, just a reminder, I think um Cheryl, our assessor, sent out a letter to you, um, talking about how the assessed values um need to correspond to the changes in the market. Um, the state of New York uh lets uh the assessor in each community know how far off they are. Um, and then the assessor, you know, using a lot of data, um, a lot of analysis, um, you know, uh determines um the changes uh to the role. Um, in this case, trending uh residential property values throughout the Hudson Valley and elsewhere in the country have changed dramatically. I think uh in Ryan Beck, it was about a twenty percent increase, the same with Mylan or uh certainly Clermont, I think, was a twenty percent increase in the assessed value that doesn't correspond to the changes in the taxes that you pay, just so you know. What we uh try to do then is to offset that by lowering the tax rate um so that we can maintain the same level of taxation and services, and we're proud to say, I think that we haven't raised taxes yet in the, well, it's now going on the seventh year. Um, but do know that um all residential properties were trended up seventeen percent. And after all that, um, the assessor says that unfortunately, I was notified after the role was printed and letters had gone out that the state claims now the new level of assessment will be at ninety-eight percent, so there's a two percent difference between what your assessed value is and what the market value, uh corresponding market value is for your property. But again, that's all residential properties in the town were trending up, and um uh thanks to Matt Federally for conducting the grievance uh hearings um uh by Zoom, uh the technical aspects of it. And that is the Assessor's Report. Okay, building and zoning, who's doing building and zoning?
Oh, I am the liaison.
You're doing that as well, though, I think you're.
Um.
Yeah.
So, uh, for the month of May, last meeting, when we did this, in the last month, it was for the first quarter, um. Now, for the month of May, thirty-six permits, we did eighty-seven inspections, there were nineteen uh certificates of completion or. They did eighty seven inspections, there were nineteen, uh, certificates of completion or CFOs. Three complaints and the revenue was ten thousand five hundred and twelve, and I'll just put that a little bit, it, we're trending up a little bit because if you looked at. When we did January through April, which is four months, um, the percentage here is a, is there, um. The ratio is a little bit higher, but that's to be expected because this is the season when a lot of building happens, uh. And, um. That's really about it for building and zoning.
Well, it will be interesting to see how busy this year will be. I mean, you think it, it would be, um, naturally, but I. Uh, was talking with the electrical inspector. And asking him how activity levels were, and he said it was incredibly dead because people can't get. What they need for their projects. And I'm sure if you've been watching the news and hearing about. All the ships no longer and, and the LA port, and now they're talking about the ships, um, off of China that. Aren't getting to where they need to go and, and obviously when it comes to things like semiconductors from Taiwan and. Other, uh, manufacturing from, uh, other parts of the world, um. All of that has become. A real challenge for folks and, and leading to, uh, a lot of increased pricing. So anyway, that's. That's my spiel and I'm sticking to it. Okay, um. Next up, I have to scroll through. A lot of pages here. What's our next, uh? Department report, folks, is. Did you do? It's a very long building department report. I'm not gonna. That was just for April. Here's a chart, by the way, this might be interesting for folks just to see. Maybe you're not as interested as.
Robert, you're not sharing the screen anymore.
I am, yeah, in a minute. There we go. Okay, just to see some of the fees that have been developed so far year to date, most of it's building to, uh, building permits. Certificate of occupancy, um, completion. Permit renewal, pool sheds, decks, and that does, that mix does change throughout the year. It's very seasonal. And weather has a lot to do with fee type totals for select period. Okay, and this is for the period of April twenty third to May twenty third. We also do, uh, fire inspections as well. Um, we have a highway department, uh. Report or communication anyway, um. Jacob, did you wanna, uh, just give us a quick summation of that?
Sure. So, um, I think the, the top line piece of this is that. Ken Fowler, who's worked for the town for over twenty five years, um, has tendered his resignation and will be leaving next week, at the end of next week. So I think I wanted to, um, extend congratulations to him on his retirement and thank him for his service to the town. There's some information about, um, staffing, um, with the retirement, the working crew will be four time, four full-time active employees. Um, there's a person on leave, then we're not sure when they're gonna be back, um, but we've just hired a temporary laborer who'll be working with the department. Over the course of the summer. So Teresa says she's going to be posting, um. Like doing a job posting for a replacement for Ken, um, and ask for some information about that, but, um, questions about staffing and. Things that I think will be a continuing discussion moving forward. I think that there's also some things about, um, you know. The CBA and things like that, which we've talked about, um, earlier in this meeting. So that's sound effect. But I think those are the main. The main points that are relevant for this meeting.
Great. Thank you, Jacob. All right, next up is. The police report, Julia, for some reason, Matt, I think, put the police report with your name on it, but. Once again, it's Bill, right? Who's the liaison for that? Bill, I think you're gonna have to start sharing some of these.
We'd love to. Although I'll make it quick. They sent us March and April's, um, and I'll do what Bill O'Neill used to do, which was. Get to the, to the meat of it, which is, there were ninety incidents that they reported.
Robert, do you want to share that?
Sorry. Yeah, well, I'll, I'll slowly scroll for some people can get some sense of what, what's in these police reports. Go ahead. Sorry, Bill.
That's okay. So in March, um, there were a total of ninety, uh, incidents that they responded to. These are various things. Whether it was a domestic dispute or D F U I or whatever. Um, there were seven arrests that were made by the police department and they issued, uh, fifty, uh, ticket summons. I'm assuming those were. For, um, traffic violations. And I think that's a good, it's at the very bottom. Yeah, they're alphabetized. I do want to point out welfare checks for people, just for the public to understand that a lot of times. Say someone, uh, hasn't been returning phone calls or they're a senior citizen. One of the services that the police department does, it's very important is. They do welfare checks to make sure people are okay. Um, and they've actually come across situations in the past where they've actually, if they hadn't done that welfare check. Uh, bad things would have happened, you know, someone was unconscious on the floor and they climbed through a window to, to resuscitate them. So. It's, it's a really important function and I, I want to make sure people understand what that's about. Um, and then in April was a little bit lighter. There were eighty incidents that they responded to, uh, they made three arrests. And there were thirty one summons, tickets issued, um, and a lot of welfare checks. So that's. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Christine. Would you, um, do your best as I know you always do to try to summarize? This lengthy novel, also known as the Rec Commission Report. I have it up.
Soon as I unmute myself, there we go. Okay, um, so the, um, the rec department, it. Is always busy, but even more busy at this time of year, yeah, spring, getting everything ready, um. Just to recap, the rec department handles. Um, Rec Park East and West and Saint Margaret's Home and the Red Church Cemetery outside of Tivoli. So, and of course, all of those things, uh, require a lot of work in the spring to get them ready for public use. Um, at Rec Park. East, um, there's, uh, continuing, um. Requests for use of the, um, challenger field, the synthetic field, um, it. We, it, it's getting a tremendous amount of use, um, and there is even more requests for it on a continuing basis. Uh, and so, uh, and there's some, also some plans to, um. You know, upgrade, they put a batting cage in, they may put a, they're looking at putting a pitching mound in that. We're looking at, um, pitching. I don't know, I guess you call them pitching mounds, uh, for the field itself, for the different uses, um, softball versus baseball. It's very expensive, um, to put those in. Many of the projects that are. Um, being worked on, uh, or coming, getting ready to be worked on have been, you know, kind of put off for a very long time. So we're still in the midst of. Um, a lot of, um. Cleanup as far as projects that need to be done, a lot of lighting, um, for instance. Uh, and the pickleball park. Courts, for instance, are up and running and, you know, could be lit. The volleyball courts are about to be lit. Um, over at Rec Park West, the dugouts at the baseball field over there are underway, um, the. Structures are done, the roofs, uh, come next, and after that, of course, we can run electric and whatnot over there. Tree work continues to be done. Um, unfortunately, we continue to see vandalism and other projects. Uh, and it is, it's really unfortunate for many reasons. I mean, we are making big financial investments in the park. And then to see, um, you know, vandalism of those, and then we have to pay to clean up the vandalism and replace things. It's very. Um, it's very sad. So, um, hopefully the cameras that are in place now will help with, um, some of that. Um, the skate park is also next up for phase two of a very long-term plan that's been in place there. So there'd be some. Some planning and bidding, uh, and such that's gonna happen there. Um, for the summer rec program, I just wanted to let everybody know. That the, um, summer rec brochure is up on the town website. So that's redhook.org. And, excuse me, that has a listing. Um, of the programs that are gonna be available and registration will be held on June fourth and the eleventh. Um, from nine to one P M, uh, the deadline is June twenty fourth. So, you know, don't wait to the last minute so that you can, um, get the pro, your kids signed up into the programs that you want. Um, every year there are changes to the requirements for the paperwork. Um, that is required to participate in the. Programs, both from. Uh, families enrolling children and from the, what the town has to do, uh, we're a little bit ahead this year because we have. Um, many, we have the playground, I mean, the program directors. Uh, and the health director are coming back for this year. We have twelve counselors already committed to come back from this year. I mean, from last year, so, uh, that's really great news, um, at this point in the project, uh, in the, the programs rather. Um, few other things going on, um, there's a, um, bluebird nesting box projects that going on. So we put some of those in at, uh, the rec parks as well as at the Red Church property. Uh, and for any one, well, I guess I had to do a red church thing, so I'll talk about that too. Since it's the same, but, um. The. Town has taken over that property, so I'm just gonna roll right into the red church. And not only do we have the, the cemetery itself and, and the graves, et cetera, that are there, but we are also responsible for the building. And it is a historic building. Um, and once again, before I forget, there is gonna be an open house, um, this, we got a memorial day. Um, I believe, Memorial Day weekend. So if you haven't ever been there and you'd like to see the red church, um, it's gonna be May thirtieth, uh, I believe. And, um, yeah, so. But there's a lot of work now and that's gonna come due for the building itself, um, shutter repairs, window repairs, painting. Um, we're looking, there's no electricity to the building right now, and because it is a historic building, it would be nice to have, um. Fire alarms, you know, wired in fire alarms there, heaven forbid something should happen. So, um, I really, really want to compliment our rec department, not only on the great work they do. But also the planning that they do and the really thinking ahead on, uh, a lot of things such as, you know, trying to. Look at getting, um, fire detectors at the church, uh, the red church and a few other things. They really. They play a huge role in our town, um, and the quality of life for our, um, residents. So they should be recognized and congratulated for that.
Thanks, Christine. Yeah, it's amazing amount of work that they do. And I received a, a call today that we'll, we'll be getting a donation to the red church. Cemetery by, um. One of our, uh, residents who departed, uh, part of the estate planning.
Very nice.
So, yeah, very nice, something. Well, it's a wonderful property and if you have not been there, I strongly urge you to go there, uh, Memorial Day and take a look. The building is. About as simple and as, as moving, uh, uh, a place as, as you'll find. Uh, anywhere in the country, quite frankly, um. Very good. Yeah, in your report, you were talking about pickleball lights, um, which is something we would, of course, love to, uh, be able to give to. All of those passionate pickleball players. Wow, who knows? Um, but we did get an estimate and, and the.
It's a very, it's a very healthy estimate, so we'll have to see where that's gonna go.
Yeah, sobering. Um, if, if anybody knows a billionaire out there. Looking to put their name on some LED lights where nobody can see it.
Well, or, you know, we did a community project for the, the playground equipment, maybe, maybe all, all these very. Avid pickleball players would want to get involved in a fundraiser, help with lights.
Well, that's true, but even with the playground equipment, it was a very small percentage of what the cost was. So I think that's being rethought because when you calculate the. Um, number of opportunities where people can play, you know, seasonally. And the lights, I mean, if we can come up with something a little more affordable, then maybe we'll look to go out to bid. A different strategy, perhaps, um, on a project, but, but right now I don't think that, uh. The money is commensurate with the benefit. But I did, um, wanna, uh, mention to you board members. Um, today I went over to look at the dog park and as you know, a few years ago. We offered to take over maintenance of the, um, combined Ryan Beck Red Hook Dog Park, which. You know, honestly, has been a bit of a challenge. There are no, uh, there's no infrastructure there. Speaking of infrastructure, there's no electric, there's no water. Um, the fencing is starting to age now. Um, it's been a challenge maintaining anything with growth this spring as opposed to last spring. But, um, I guess what I'm doing is maybe, uh, giving you some, uh, heads up that I might be, uh, coming to you in the, in the future, near future. Um, to see if we could gather a committee, um, to work on a proposal to overhaul the dog park. Much like we did the rec park and, um, because it's, it's in need of, of some attention. It's. Uh, in need of, of being upgraded to being a better experience for. Our residents and frankly for the dogs that go there as well. So, uh, heads up on that coming, um, maybe in the next couple of meetings. Okay, we have, is it true? Only one more report. Oh, there's a, there's another. There's another resume of somebody interested in surfing on the CBA, George, uh, John. I have not heard back. About that, but I hope that, uh. We might have something for next meeting. Okay, uh, Town of Red Hook Tree Preservation Committee, Jacob.
Yeah, so there's, um, a lot of mostly really good tree news this month. This is from the May meeting, um, a lot of trees that were recently planted are doing well, um, at Rec Park West, um, in the parking area near the pool. Um, a crimson maple that was planted, planted in the high school auditorium, um, all those things are looking really good. The committee continues to water them, um, the new one hundred gallon watering bag has a lot of, uh. Approval from the committee, which is good. Um, the Arbor Day celebration was a big success. Um, I want to extend thanks to Beekeeper Deb Tuttle, Red Oak Public Library. Nancy Gusky for donating the raffle basket, Bard College Volunteers and Lori Houston for joining. So thanks to everybody for making that a successful event for the community. Um, there were leftover tree seedlings from that event that were distributed at the recycling center. Um, and now we get to the less good news, um, the Tree City sign on Route one eighty nine near Rock City has disappeared. Um, so the commission is going to be reaching out to the highway department to see if they know anything about it. But if anybody watching this meeting has information, I would appreciate if you'd pass that along. Um, on the nice side of Tree City things, we've gotten our sixteen year stickers, so celebrating that we've been a tree city for sixteen years, which is a. Really nice accomplishment. Um, those will be attached to the signs, um, including hopefully that fourth missing sign. Once we have it back in our possession and post it again. Um, so the committee is planning to meet. Last Thursday, um, to assess existing trees and make plans for future work. So, um, lots of really good work from the Tree Preservation Commission.
Thanks, Jacob. So speaking of signs, uh, that's not the only sign that needs some attention. The welcome to Red Hook signs, if you've noticed. Uh, I think those signs, some of them are put up by the chamber. Um, there's a sign that frontier is on. Um, what I'd like to suggest is maybe we take a look at. Um, replacing some of the welcome to Red Hook signs with something that's more appropriate, more attractive. Um, also does not. you know, promote uh any particular business. Give that some thought and maybe we can discuss that in a near future meeting and and obviously replace the Tree City sign. That's missing. Um, as far as the commission, thanks for the great work as always. The saplings are a huge hit. I was happy to see that they were distributed, the leftovers at the recycling center. TJ is going to have to join the circus because he is juggling so many things going on at the recycling center now. And we can't thank him enough and the staff. Um, for folks at home, not only can you bring your recycling to the recycling center, not only can you bring your uh garbage there as well, but now we're taking food waste. In fact, um, we're doing a six-month pilot. We want to see if there's enough demand for that. Um, and we're also doing, we have volunteers now doing refrigerant, refrigerant removal. I knew I was gonna trip over that with my tongue, but very importantly, the impact on the ozone. If improper release of refrigerant out there. And so we have a shed there and we have volunteers who are doing that work, who um are trained to do that work. And so that's also very exciting. So very happy that your recycling center, which is free to access. You can take advantage of uh these opportunities. And also, uh, thanks to everyone who showed up for shred day. You know, when you um go to represent your community, you have a good sense of what people are interested in, and then there are things that surprise you how popular they are. Pickleball, we mentioned earlier, shred day. The line was unbelievable. Half an hour before shred day started. We were able to get everybody in and off of Route nine, but boy, it was quite a long line, so we'll hopefully continue that, um maybe twice a year, have shred day. I know that's an important thing for folks to uh to properly and safely dispense of um those materials. So um thanks for uh our local business, as a matter of fact, who did trend day. Okay. That's all we have for reports. Any public comments uh before we close uh tonight's meeting? Okay. Hearing none. It is now nine oh five. I would entertain a motion to close tonight's meeting. Christine Kane, you were fast with that one. Okay, very good. Is there a second? Oh, we're gonna have to keep All right, Bill. It was like, why don't we have to second everything? You're gonna filibuster, Jacob.
I saw this agenda and I was like, oh, I can't wait to be here until eleven tonight. We're gonna be really getting into it.
Very good. Well, thank you, Deanna. Thank you, Chris. Um, all in favor, Christine Kane?
I moved, but I
Oh, she moved. Where did you move to? Uh, Julia Solomon. And Jacob Testa and myself. Good night, everyone. Stay healthy, please.
Good night.